Well, good evening, everyone. For those of you that got in here a little bit late, everybody's dodging the raindrops, and most of us made it before that, but thank you for showing up on an otherwise rainy evening in the city of Gold. I will call this meeting of mayor and council to order on August 27, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business is our invocation given by council member Matt Momsonhan, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're gathered here this evening to do the work of the city of Villarica and our community. We ask that you bless our minds and thoughts and let us do your work. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, next item is adoption of the agenda. And council, I have changes to that agenda. The first item is for a call for a special election, and our city attorney, David Mecklen, is going to handle that one. Appointment of mayor pro temp, and council will handle that one, and then Leather Street will add that one as well. The call for a special election, I would assume, would be under governing body. David?
Yes.
So we'll make that one A3.
I think the mayor pro temp election should be on probably A4.
Make it A4. David, do you agree with that?
I think that would be fine also.
And Danny, do you want to do yours under, do you want to make it a special item, or do you want to discuss it under governing body?
I think it can be discussed under the community development, under Bobby in it, so is that the place to put the Leather Street thing?
Just make it B5.
Yeah, B5.
Bingo.
Bingo.
B5 is?
Leather Street.
Leather Street discussion.
Yeah, plan and schedule.
Okay, and as I said a couple of meetings ago, we're going to start doing this a little bit differently. Before you vote, I'm going to ask the city manager if this is a true and accurate representation of the agenda that was published in the paper.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that said, I would entertain a moment, a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as changed.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. Say your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is more informational than anything else.
Since June, July, actually, 2017, I have not missed, only, I've only missed one council meeting, and it was because of the weather. That being said, why do I do it? Because I like to, and because I also promised administration as a commissioner on historical preservation that I would be here in order to understand how all of these departments went together. We don't always know all the details of everything. Being a jack-of-all-trades and master of men is not necessarily a good thing. It's much better to be able to do one thing well and to do it well than to do a bunch of things and not do them well. At this point, I understand that not all of us can attend all the meetings. There are over 20 department meetings in the government right now, with meetings that are held every month in addition to a variety of other aspects of its subconsequences. We have five boards and four commissions, not counting all the civic organizations that help make up the city of Villarica. I don't know how many people happen to watch our show in the video, but two weeks ago, I was able to attend our, one of our budget public meetings. In addition to our city council members, there were seven staff members present, three reporters, one police officer, and five of us as citizens, two of whom belong to spouses of our council. I think that this is abominable when we're always complaining about what's being done without understanding all of it. Because of that, last March, we had a symposium that was past, present, and future. We are going to have another symposium, the second Villarica Citizen Symposium will be held on the Wednesday 20th at Powell Park from 5:30 to 7:00. It is going to be called, I didn't know that, a behind-the-scenes look at city government. And we're going to let you know eventually what three or four departments will be highlighted so that all of us get to know a little bit more about the workings. Coming to the city council doesn't hack it. We know it's there, and we understand basically to some way, but when you're able to attend other board meetings or you hear what's being done, it's much better. The other thing I would like to inform everyone is that many of you know that we are in the process of writing a book with the narratives of Villarica. We have books on the city history, but we have nothing about the narratives. And so to that end, we are interviewing people who were here prior to 1965, parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, what it was like to live in Villarica. If any of you know anyone, I'm in the process of being able to go to the library and interview them, but if you need to have my email address or telephone number, Alisa Dora, our city clerk, will kindly give it to you if you check with him. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and council members, Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive, Villarica. My comment is about item B2, the annexation and rezoning request. I would, I would request that the city council make sure that that Popeyes that they show in the agenda packet online complies with the sign orders that we just voted in, so we don't end up with another Taco Bell debacle.
Thank you, sir.
Rhonda McCullers, 401 North Lost Lake Cove, Villarica. Just wanted to come up here on behalf of Main Street Advisory Board, invite everyone to the Gold Rush Festivals on September 7. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for making this a great event. Thank you to the police department. We start out with a run. We will have a parade, that's always lots of fun, and then we will have lots of food vendors, all kind of vendors that day, lots of stuff going on. We would like to invite you all downtown on Saturday, September 7. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comments portion of the meeting, and we will move on to council updates. And if council will indulge me, I have a couple of things. First of all, I would like to recognize the two candidates that we have in the room right now for the mayor's position. I know we have Ms. Dominique Conte in the back of the room. If you would stand so everybody could see you. And we also have Michael Day is here, and Gil McDougall has a training thing that he had already planned for and was not able to attend, or he would be here as well. But I just want to say publicly to you two and to Mr. McDougall, thank you for your commitment to this city and for agreeing to run, and just always remember that I told you that, and don't hate me after, you know, three years if you're elected. So, no, it's, it's a, it's been a pleasure for me, and it will be a pleasure for you, and I will be supportive of you in your personal capacity or as your capacity as mayor if that should happen. So, thank you for being here. And the second thing I would like to mention is I noticed around town that we have backhoes in place, and we have water pipe here and there, and it just occurred to me that it would be good for the public to know what those are for, and specifically the two that I'm talking about is the water pipe that's at the intersection of Pumpkin Town Road and Highway 61, and also the backhoe that's sitting right out here. Both of those have to do with water line extensions and trying to relieve some of the pressure, I mean, some of the lack of pressure that we have in parts of our city. And probably more important, from a traffic standpoint, the water line that's in place up at, at the intersection of Pumpkin Town Road and 61 is the first steps in our roundabout, the first of many roundabouts that probably will be, will be the city of roundabouts instead of the city of Gold one day. But that's, the first step in that process is putting in the water line to join those things up. So as we're doing these things, I would just ask our city manager to appoint someone, even if it's me, to go out and take photos and maybe put that on the city website and, and the page to let people know what we're doing. I think it's important for the public to know that we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do with the monies that were, that come from the raise in all the utility rates. So, Tom, if you would handle that, please, sir. Any other council updates or information? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to tab A, which is governing body. And the first item is approval, approval of minutes. Council, you have the minutes of the August 13, 2019 minute, uh, meeting. I would entertain a motion to either amend or approve.
Is read if there is no corrections from the August 13 meeting?
I couldn't hear that.
Approval is. I said I moved that we approved the minutes if there's, there's no correction from the August 13 meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a motion to second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two is a request for an open container and use of Prospector Park on September 20 through the 22nd. And Tom, you're going to handle this one. Correct?
We received a letter from Hickstown Brewing requesting certain accommodations for a music event that they wanted to host at their facility in September. In the cover sheet, you'll see that they are interested in a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event, September 20 through 22. The musical component would be held at Prospector Park, which is across the street from their building. They would like to be able to temporarily fence that area. They would also like to receive approval for temporary road closures of part of North Avenue and part of Temple. They would also like to have food truck vendors involved in this event. And as far as the open container goes, they would like to limit the containers to plastic cups and only products sold at Hickstown. The hours that they requested created a problem. It looked like they were a little bit long at night, considering that you're adjacent to a residential area, and they started at 11:00 on Sunday morning, which would conflict with the two area churches. So I now have some revised times that look like would better accommodate the neighborhood. So staff recommendation is to approve the fencing, the road closures, the food vendors, based on them applying for a permit, a special event permit, I believe, David, on section 438 or whatever.
Right.
Given times that, that fit what we're already doing at the mill.
David, do you want to weigh in on this?
You know, a question was raised to me earlier today as to whether or not we have anything in our ordinance that would allow this, and I, as Tom mentioned, I think section 4-38 does allow for special events to be held. And I tried to, to think back to other events that we've had. It would be the equivalent, I believe, of the permit that we gave to the fraternity. I don't remember exactly what the name of the fraternity was, but to host an event over at the mill where they asked for permission to be able to sell alcohol at that, at that type of an event. So that is a similar type of event, but each one's got to be judged on its own merits.
So, Tom, but they have not yet applied.
Sorry about that. But, so, what we've been asked to approve tonight is not the permit, because they haven't applied for the permit yet, but the road closures and what was the other?
Food trucks.
Food trucks.
Fencing.
And the fencing.
And the use of Prospector Park.
And the use of Prospector's Park. But doesn't the, doesn't section 438, and maybe this is a David question, require that the fencing or the structure, I think is how they framed it, would have, they would have to include that in a diagram? So can we approve the fencing tonight if we don't have a rendering of that, which is, was my reading of the ordinance?
Where's Bobby? Does the permit go back to council, or is it just administrated? So we'll, we'll handle that part.
Okay.
So the 10, 11:00 PM, am I reading that correctly? And, and does the ordinance say that you're supposed to close at 10:00, or am I reading some, or not reading some?
My understanding is that most of our events at the mill end at 10:00. We don't, we don't advertise them later than 10:00, is my, and I don't think Janet's here, so, but is that, anybody want to dispute that?
No, that's my understanding also, is that we have a 10:00 cutoff.
So then we would have to cut off 15:00.
And that's what they're proposing now.
Okay, so this motion in here doesn't quite have that. We'll put a few changes into it.
Right.
All right. I permit that Villaricton Brewing Company to rent temporary fence for Prospector Park on September 20, 21, 22, from 9:00 to 10:00 PM, as a musical entertainment venue, and on Sunday, starting earlier than 1:00 PM. I permit that we allow the consumption of alcohol from plastic cups purchased only from Hicktown Brewing during these same dates and times. Consumption may occur, may occur at Prospector Park along North Avenue. Last of all, we would allow up to three food truck vendors to operate during these same dates and times on the roads immediately west and north of Prospector Park.
Second.
Okay, from motion to second, I was going to ask council member McPherson, you are in favor of that, you seconded it, so I assume you are, because it is in your ward.
Yeah, as long as they save me a Dr. Pepper, I'm good. No, I drove by there, I looked at it, the, the only concerns I had got addressed because they had to do with the timing, and as far as it being later, noisier for the people. So there, the timing is good now, and I just thought, how cool is this if you've got a downtown business that's going to bring people downtown? They're paying for security, they're cleaning up, they're doing, and so have at it.
Any further discussion?
Music is going to be Sunday, too.
Starting at 1:00.
Huh?
Starting at 1:00.
Oh, okay. Yep, that's what I was asking some questions, is, because you, I, if it's, if it's 1:00 then, but I was thinking about the church right behind it.
Yeah, I delayed it, start on Sunday at 1:00.
Okay, that's what I was asking that question.
My question, I think, well, the, the motion that Danny read out included the consumption of alcohol, which my understanding was that's not what staff was proposing tonight, and that would be handled by the permit process.
That's what I thought I heard, too.
So.
Tom? Did you not say?
My understanding is that council has to approve the, the open container on a case by case.
Right. And I think that the motion is subject to the approval of the permit under sections 4-38 also. I mean, that's an implied condition of it, is that they, they have to get staff approval under the existing ordinance.
Does that need to be added to the motion?
I don't, I don't think, I think that's just as a matter of law, they don't get, they don't get a permit to do it unless they apply for the permit and it's approved by the staff.
Yeah.
I mean, you can approve everything you want, but if they don't comply with the ordinance and they hadn't got, I'm assuming that they will apply for the permit and...
Any further discussion?
I'll just say that usually when an applicant comes in and applies for a permit, we have all the permit, we have the permit and all the requirements of the ordinance before us. Just for example, the zoning ordinance application, the zoning applications that we have tonight. I don't, not, I've never seen the case where you authorize it first, and then you turn around and then they submit it for the permit. So it just seems backwards to me, so.
We blessed it, and they still have to get the permit.
Right.
The permit, they don't go anywhere.
Ma'am, I think you're, I think your point's well taken. The only thing I would say to that is this is, this is a completely new realm that we're all dealing with now, and, but I think in the future, probably, we need, staff needs to look at that, but in this particular situation, I think it's, we're treading on new ground here, so, but I do understand your point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? First meeting, I get to break the tie, and I will cast the, my vote to approve the permit. So that is an affirmative vote.
The event, okay.
Okay. Moving right along. Item number three, which is added, is a call for a special election. David?
Yeah, this is a proposed call for a special election to fill the vacancy that exists in District 4. We do have enough time, if the council approves this tonight, to be able to publish this in the newspaper this week and have qualifying next week to fill that vacancy. Otherwise, if, if we don't get this done, then the special election would be held in next March. If we hold it in November, then it's going to be held along with the citywide election anyway, so there'd be no additional cost to the city. If we have to postpone it till March, the city will end up having to pay for a special election out of our own pocket, an additional cost. I mean, the, the one in November's not free to us, but it's going to be held regardless.
When are our primaries?
I'm going to wait for, see if we get a motion second before I have any comments on it. Any questions for David?
No questions, but we've always tried, we have a tight budget for 2020, and we've always tried to conserve the people's money, so I don't see why we should delay it since we can have it this year. So I'll make a motion, we approve the call for the special election for Ward 4.
Okay. Have a motion to second. As far as discussion is concerned, I've weighed this both ways, just so the public knows, this, this is basically, aside from the fact that we've got an additional cost by having it in, in March, as opposed to having it in November with the mayoral election, there's two sides to this, and everybody needs to know what those are. If we wait until March, then basically the Ward 4 is unrepresented until next year. On the flip side of that, if we have the, the election in March, in November, basically what you've done for future council persons and even council member McDougall is that there's no way, obviously, he can run for two offices at one time. So should he lose the election in November, he would not have time to run for the election in March. So that's an unbiased comment, but I wanted you to know both sides of that. That's the plus and the minus. That's, that's the pluses and minuses, as far as I'm concerned, and there may be others that y'all want to weigh in on.
I tried to look at it myself, because I thought, okay, candidates, how much time do they have to get ready? It's, it's shorter than, than I would prefer to give candidates to get ready, but if you weigh that against them being unrepresented, unrepresented, unrepresented in Ward 4 for that many months, and I think we know a little bit about what happened when Mike Williamson was gone, and that was a lot of months, they didn't have that. When is our primaries this year? And that was the only thing I, I was weighing, is also special election fees compared to tying it in with November.
My understanding is that the primaries are in, that they are in March, but that we would still have to have a separate city election apart from the, from, from the statewide primary or presidential primary, that we'd essentially have to set up our own separate booth, essentially in the same room.
Okay.
Hmm, okay.
Now, I would remind the council, since I won't be here to say it, well, I will be, but I'll be sitting back there, that this was not done in a previous election, when the, the previous mayor stepped down to run for the state house seat, that position, I believe, was opened in May. Is that correct?
I'm trying to remember.
And we went without, without electing a mayor until November of that year, and a council person. So just, we need to be consistent. Whatever you do now, in my opinion, needs to be done from now on.
Well, and another thing, too, that may have been ideal had we been able to do it, but legally we can't, is had we been able to appoint someone in an interim and give more time either to the candidates or whatever, but we can't do that unless there's 12...
I think it's 90 days to the end of the term, maybe six months, but it, Councilman McDougall's term ends on December 31, 2020. So he's essentially a year and a half away from the end of his term.
Yeah, and even that wasn't ideal, because really what you'd only want to do is if you could have a real short interim until an election and have somebody who's not going to run the way the county commission did. In that way, it would have given everyone more time, but, I don't know, I can't see leaving Ward 4 unrepresented for a long time. That's a real disadvantage.
Any further discussion? Not all, dinner time, motion?
I did, I think I did. I made a motion, call for a special election for Ward 4, per David Mecklen's instructions.
Yeah, there was a resolution that was attached to it. I don't have a copy of it.
Do I need to read that?
Yeah, the resolution is on the second page there.
Do I need to read that?
Yep. I think that it would be good to just read it out, it's short enough.
Okay, the resolution, or do you want to read this, Mayor?
You, since you made the motion, you'd...
Okay. Okay, resolution, City of Villarica, Georgia. Being hereby resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Villarica do hereby call for a special election to be held to fill the current vacancy of the city council due to the resignation of District 4 Councilperson Gil McDougall. The terms and conditions of the call are set forth in the attached document entitled Call for the Special Election, City Council, Ward 4. It is so resolved on this 27th day of August, 2019.
Do I hear a second? Have a motion to second. David, it's not necessary to read the qualifying dates and all that, because that's part of the resolution.
It is part of the resolution, but just for the sake of public knowledge, qualifying is going to begin next Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, September 3, 2019, at 8:30 AM, and will end on Thursday, September 5, 2019, at 4:30 PM. Qualifying costs $72. So if you plan to run for office, you need to be at City Hall next Tuesday through Thursday.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, and the second item that we added was the rec, uh, let's see, where am I at?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Appointment of mayor pro tem, and just for, for the audience's information, the mayor pro tem serves as the mayor in his, in their absence. They also run meetings, and it's a very important position for the city. Although I haven't missed a meeting in three years, that's, that's always a possibility that I could, so the mayor pro tem has to be ready to step in, to run the meeting, and also to answer in, in the face of any kind of emergency or thing that happens in the city. So it's a very important position. Council?
I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem for the rest of 2018, Shirley Marchman, council member.
And will you accept if you're chosen, ma'am? I don't want to vote, and then you say, I don't want to do that?
Yes, I'll accept.
Okay. Councilmember Marchman has been the premier pro tem and also the mayor of our city before I was elected, so she will do a great job, no doubt. So, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor? You're going to vote against it? And now you're getting set up here.
Yep, you need to move.
All right, tab B, community development. Bobby?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have tab ABL-07-19. It's an application for a wine malt beverage and distilled spirits pouring license for Brothers Bar and Steakhouse LLC. The applicant is Brothers... The applicant is Brothers Bar and Steakhouse LLC licensee is Paul Anderson, 214 Sunny Lane, Villarica, Georgia. Location is 901 South Carroll Road, Land Lot 131, 6th District, Carroll County, Ward Two. The applicant has complied with the ordinance with regard to legal notification requirements, has successfully passed a background check conducted by the Villarica Police Department. Also, there's no location zoning restrictions that would hinder the issuance of the licenses. This applicant was previously approved to serve alcoholic beverages within this establishment. However, the business has undergone some reconstruction and reorganization and therefore requires a new approval, and I believe the applicant is present.
Under questions for staff, as we start this off, just a little bit of housekeeping on question, your purpose and your motion seem to be different. Your motion is to approve the beverage application for Luther's...
Yeah, I saw that typo. My staff did this, Mayor. They should read Brothers Bar and Steakhouse LLC.
Duly noted. Questions for staff?
Bobby, so earlier this summer, or late spring, the same establishment, but a different name was in here, is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, I was just making clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we ask the applicant to come forward? Would the applicant please come forward at this time? State your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks, well, not mine. None of that part.
Paul Anderson, 214 Sunny Lane, Villarica, Georgia. What am I supposed to be saying? I didn't hear that other part.
Questions for the applicant? Have you known? Sir, you can be seated.
Thank you.
And we will open this up for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application for alcohol, this application for alcohol permit, please do so at this time. Seeing none, it will revert back to the council for action.
Okay, what was the error on the motion? It's not Luther's, it's the other?
It's Brothers Bar and Steakhouse.
Brothers Bar and Steakhouse? This up here? Okay.
Anybody?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage application for Brothers Bar and Steakhouse LLC, 901 South Carroll Road, Villarica, Georgia, 301 A.
I think I skipped the process in this whole thing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, whether it's after the vote or before, we need to be consistent with our other statements to applicants. Mr. Anderson, if you'd come back up for a second? Before the council votes to approve your application or disapprove of it, you understand that the City of Villarica treats the sale of alcohol to underage persons very seriously, and that our police department has been directed to do everything they can to prevent that from happening in the city, correct? You've had a license in the city before, so you understand that they will be conducting sting operations to see if your employees are complying with our ordinances?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My speech that I always give is more personal. We had a young lady in this community several years ago that died as a result of purchasing alcohol in a neighboring county. Her family is very near and dear to me and to this community. So understand that we would hope that she would never have to come before this governing body before and try to explain why that happened. So we take it very serious. Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have a motion, and I don't believe I had a second. Did I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve this permit. All in favor? All opposed? Three, one. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number two. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here on behalf of my colleague, Ron Johnson, who is on vacation this week. So I will be available to answer any general questions you may have related to the next three agenda items, starting with number two, which is recommend, it's an application for the annexation of around 50-plus acres into the City of Villarica for the future development of a Popeyes restaurant and additional commercial development, as will be proposed in the future. The applicant is requesting, in addition to the annexation, an amendment to the future land use map from unincorporated to suburban commercial. And thirdly, as a matter of process, the zoning of the property from unincorporated to general commercial, which is consistent with the adjacent properties. The applicant is Bappu Enterprises LLC, and I guess the next step would be to have them introduce their application.
Questions for staff? Hang on a minute. Not that easy. Okay, we had a person in public comment that made a very legitimate concern made, and that is that we're consistent with our sign ordinance, so you're prepared to do that. Any other questions for staff? David, I believe this is the first annexation I've had, so I know we need to have a public hearing, but do we need to handle these separately, or...
No, I think they can be handled together. I think it would be appropriate to let the applicants make the presentation and then have the public hearing, and then we vote.
The applicant will come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Connor Patton. I live at 3559 Burnt Leaf Lane in Birmingham, Alabama. I'm representing the applicant for this one as their civil engineer. We are requesting, again, the annexation and rezoning to general commercial. We believe this zoning is, you know, compatible with the nearby developments, and I'm here for any questions you have.
Questions for the applicant?
And Connor, you've reviewed the stipulations that I proposed on this rezoning application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you, did you or your client have any objection to those stipulations?
No, sir. We're okay with the stipulations. I think it would help the, you know, help the property and the City of Villarica to have this applied to our property.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
The, I'm sorry, the report, the report was really thorough. So this 50 acres, I'm assuming that's going to take in the nice, big, deep, low area? So people keep explaining, keep asking, "Why do they keep dumping dirt over there? How long are they going to do that, and how long is that going to take?" I could just say, "Well, I'm sorry, that's county property, and I don't know, it's going to be handled at the county level." I'm not going to be able to do that anymore. I'm going to have to know what's going on. But I read the report, and it was very thorough on how it fits in with our comprehensive plan and everything else, so I'm good.
Do you have any plans for the rest of that property?
Our intention is to only purchase the small corner of the property for the Popeyes, and the remaining of the property will remain within city limits, but under a separate developer to be developed in the future.
Good answer. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
David, we need to have a public hearing on this. Do we need to separate the annexation?
No, I think, just to clarify what the process is, I think you hold the public hearing together, and then the process would be to vote on the zoning first, conditioned upon the annexation of the property. And once, if you rezone the property, then you vote secondly on the actual annexation.
So it's two separate?
Two separate votes.
That's what I was thinking, I just want to make sure.
They have a third item in here about the comprehensive plan and future land use plan.
All right, so we will open up the public comments portion of the meeting at this time. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak for or against the zoning reapplication, please do so at this time. Not reapplication.
No, it's just the zoning application, and they can also speak. The public hearings could be held together on the annexation.
I got a question, David. You sure you got that in the right order, because this will be a rezoning property that belongs to the county and not city property unless we annex it first?
Well, the rezoning is subject, is conditioned upon the annexation, and, you know, it's always tricky, but that is the right order, to rezone it first, conditioned upon the annexation, and then to annex it.
Okay. So David, in the proposed motion by staff, they have a second motion here, a proposed motion that amends the comprehensive plan and the future land use map?
Yeah, I think that should be like a separate third motion.
But that should be prior to the annexation motion?
Yeah.
Or is that getting in the weeds?
Trying to think of what the order of that one should be. I am sure about the other two. I think it would probably be appropriate to have that motion first, again, conditioned upon the rezoning and the annexation.
Okay.
So the public hearing is for all?
For all of them, yes. There's no point doing that three times.
If y'all understand that, you're better than I am right now. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please do so at this time? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Hi, this is Val Runyon, 2137 South Van Wert Road, Villarica, Georgia. I'm just trying to, it's 50 acres here, so I'm trying to surmise, they're getting it all zoned for commercial use only, or...
That is the proposal.
Okay. Okay, so when it's zoned for that, can it be switched to residential, for building residential properties or such? Because I have heard...
Adjacent properties, this is, we're only dealing with one parcel.
Which is 50 acres? Which is going to be all commercial?
This parcel, yes.
Okay, okay, that was a question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will revert back to the council.
Okay, in the right order, I'm going to make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan and future land use map to include subject property designated as suburban, suburban village, and to include it within the amended city limits, conditioned upon rezoning approval and annexation approval.
Second.
Have a motion to second. David, did that sufficiently cover all of the three items?
That covers the first three.
That's first motion.
All right. Motion to second, any discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the rezoning proposal of parcel number 1680190 to general commercial, Highway 61 requested by Bappu Enterprises LLC, conditioned upon annexation approval.
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion?
I would just ask that maybe Mr. Carter can amend his motion to add, to ensure that the, with the conditions that were proposed at the planning and zoning commission by me.
Okay, I amend my motion to that effect.
For the city clerk, would you make your motion again, please?
The motion that he just said, that he made a motion to approve the rezoning of both of parcels, 1680190 to general commercial, Highway 61 requested by Bappu Enterprises LLC, conditioned upon the approval of the annexation.
And also include the conditions put upon how they plan to zone him.
You got it? Go.
That's good.
Motion to second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
All right, document number three here. I make a motion to approve the annexation proposal of parcel number 1680190 on Highway 61 requested by Bappu Enterprises LLC into the city limits of Villarica from Carroll County.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all. That was fine. Item number three.
Y'all made that look very easy. The next item is a grant opportunity with the Atlantic Regional Commission. The request is a resolution of support for the application, as well as a commitment of 20% for a match. This is the Transportation Improvement Program, with funds that are provided through the Federal Highway Administration and the federal government. It is an opportunity for us to get our transportation master plan, which we have already budgeted for, to the tune of $100,000, to have that project applied through this grant process, which would pay for $80,000 of that cost, which would be a cost savings to the taxpayers. You know, and in light of the discussions that have been revolving around reducing our budgetary expenditures, this is very much in line with that effort to identify alternative revenues that we could bring into the city to pay for these projects. So the request is the adoption of the resolution of support, as well as the commitment of the 20% match.
Chris, a question that I have for you is the total ground amount is...
The total, the total grant amount is $80,000. The total project cost is $100,000, as based on the current budgeted amount. Where we are in the process is that the RFP has already gone out. We've already interviewed two prospective consulting firms today, and that recommendation will be brought to the city council at their first meeting in September.
Yeah, getting ahead of, I always like to know, because grants are not free, so our matching portion is 20% of that. That was where I was headed with that.
Yes, correct. $20,000 would be the maximum match.
And the council will take action on that when the grant was approved. What's the grant cycle on this?
The grant should be, we should know whether or not we get it in October. So that's going to put us behind our current timeline roughly about 60 days at the most, but for the opportunity to receive those funds, and also that we've already gone through much of the initial process, might be a little more favorable for funding.
And I, thank you, Chris, thank you, Tom. I know Tom was in a meeting today when we had our Village Right meeting here, and when I heard he was meeting with, interviewing actually our two folks that had been on our transportation plan, it was exciting. And you've heard me say this for going on three years now, I think it's absolutely imperative that we have a transportation plan for this city. Anybody that drives around Villarica or tries to drive out of Villarica knows that traffic is awful here, and a lot of that are folks, quite frankly, that don't live in Villarica, but they use our arteries to move. And we just annexed a new property this evening, and that potentially could cause more traffic at an intersection in Villarica, so I think that the transportation plan is absolutely essential for us all to be able to move freely around town and not sit in the traffic grid for hours and hours. So thank you for your efforts to, I assume you found the grant, so, okay. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I know this has been a priority for us to do this with the traffic study, because once, once all the building goes up and everything else, and you haven't accommodated for it, you get stuck with certain situations like Highway Five and Arbor Place Mall Boulevard there, and then there's no place to move, there's no lanes to go out. And so it's been a big priority. My question was this, Chris, the, pretty much the only question I had, is I knew it involved federal funds. We were planning to spend $100,000 anyway on this. If we get this grant, that's, it's for 80, so it would save the taxpayers a lot of money, so it's almost too good to be true if you get it. So here's my question. With the federal funds, notice with the bypass, we have some of that, is there going to be, do you picture any nightmares or headaches with the strings attached to it, like, you know, special studies for snails and, you know, the bat we've been looking for that isn't in this area that they keep making us look for?
The, one of the consultants we interviewed with today has recommended proceeding with a regional, Atlanta regional model for a transportation study with a, with a subregional emphasis. This would really kind of put us under the same requirements that the Atlanta Regional Commission would normally ask these programs or these projects to be written under. So there's no federal requirements above what we would want normally in... So there's no federal requirements above what we would want to normally include in our best interest so that we could apply for future funding from the federal government for implementation.
So in a nutshell, the requirements will be based on what the Atlanta Regional Commission usually requires?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's, it's a regional standard. That's not anything out of the ordinary from the consultants and what they propose to us.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Not all would entertain a motion?
I approve, excuse me, I move to approve the resolution of support and commitment of the 20% match for the Transportation Improvement Program. Call for projects for the Villarica Transportation Master Plan.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
The last item that I'm presenting is, well, actually, I'm not presenting it, I'm introducing it, is the, the rezoning of properties on Highway 61. It has indicated it's 55 and 63 Goldworth Road. This is the Avramore mixed-use development. They are going to be presenting a concept plan that has been revised since it was last brought to the city council late last year. So the applicant is Winchester Real Estate LLC, and I believe that Mr. Jay Davis is here to lead the presentation.
And this is for informational purposes only, as I understand?
That is correct.
Okay. Hang on just a minute, Chris. Any questions for staff?
So we're not voting on a rezoning or anything?
For informational purposes only.
It's the presentation.
But now is your time to ask questions if you have any.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Item number five, which is an item that was added, is a Leather Street discussion. Danny?
Presentation's fixing to go on.
Thank you for your approval, Mr. Chair. I will exit. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, everyone. I hope y'all aren't as wet as I am, and I'm almost dry now. So appreciate the opportunity to present in front of y'all tonight. This is the third of, I think, six different opportunities I have to be in front of the city in planning and zoning to make sure that I'm not only complying with the direction the city's interested in moving this project, but also listening so that if you have questions or comments that I can help address, that we can get that done. So tonight is presentation only. I expect to, unless things change, see y'all again on the 10th of next month for the actual vote to approve the zoning so that we can proceed with the rest of the project. So what we're here for tonight? For a map. Do y'all have access to maps and zoning books and all that fun stuff? I gave 10 of them to the city staff.
Well, we've got some.
I was going to say, we get the entire thing.
Online?
Electronically. So we've got.
So which one are we looking at?
Okay, I gave you big physical copies of the zoning book, and all of the general guidelines for the proposal are in there. I'm going to try to walk through it a little bit tonight. Last time I was stuck in, with 10 minutes. I will keep it as short as you want, or I will go on as long as you want, and I will certainly answer every question you have. That, little bit of history, that's important to the city of Villarica, and at least I think it's important to the city of Villarica. This was the old Williams family farm that's been here since mid-18th century, or mid-19th century, operating as a single unit and a singular family. And it was a very progressive and well-known farm throughout that historical amount of time. It has stayed intact the entire time. And when the sellers that was the Goldworth family, or the Goldworth Partners, which was Williams family heirs, sold it to me, their one request is that I keep the historical part of the property preserved for the benefit of the future residents of the city. And so I agreed to do that, and we have incorporated that into our design, not only in a city park, but in walking trails that will point to points of interest, however much interesting that the indigo field was here, and the cotton was here, and the, you know, the CCC camp was here. All of that will be on. And then in the main central square that we've set up for the historical representation of the farm, that also is represented. One neat little historical fact is the old Villarica Carrollton Highway goes right in front of it with a hitching post where the folks who used to pick up milk that was produced on that farm and cooled in the first electric cooling room in West Georgia was sent into Grady Hospital every day and into the city of Carrollton as well as Villarica. So that's the historical note that, that inspired the project to begin with. When I explained to them I wanted to build a senior living community, they were on board right from the beginning. So the reason for that is I'm going to, the county administrator and conservator for Douglas County, I live in Villarica, but I'm just over the Douglas County line. And I have had the opportunity to serve many different people over the last 10 years as their either conservative or administrator, or in fact, I'm guardian for a lot of folks who don't have anybody. And so it became my, my duty over the last 10 years to actually reach out and find housing and accommodations and so forth for the people that I care for. And since they're all from here, and I was having to ship them to Noonan and Peachtree City and the, and Gwinnett County and up to Ostell to actually have some housing that was affordable, and that's because the ones we have are great and they're full already. So nothing against the ones we have. They're, they're good. They're just full. I had a market study done by Glenn Evans, which is a division of Brooks Adams. They did, sent out 20,000 questionnaires. They did a Facebook campaign. They did a bunch of online stuff. And the market feasibility study that is a part of the package that y'all have shows that there's a need within our region, which is a 15-mile radius circle, so about 30-mile circumference. There's more than a need for 1,000 placements for, or room for senior-type housing, not all the same level. And let me explain to you what that is. That's independent living, which is basically apartments with services, which would include food plans and so forth. It's assisted living, which is actually a medical component, which means they have nursing, they have medicines, they have people help get you in and out of bed and so forth. And then there's actual memory care for people who have dementia, Alzheimer's, and those kinds of situations. So the market study was done. After that was done, I made the offer to the owners. They sold it to me. And then the dream was born. So what we decided to do, and part of our market study was to determine whether there was a value in not just having a senior living community on there, but also providing, supporting infrastructure in regards to the daily lives of regular human beings in order to help support that. And came back very positively. In fact, half of the respondents that responded, almost 50%, were between 65 and 75 instead of the normal 75 and up. And they all came back and said, sure, if I can walk down the street to the grocery store, I can walk to my pharmacy, or I can get on my wheelchair and go to the pharmacy. They would, they would much more appreciate having that opportunity, and it would bring more attractive atmosphere to their neighborhood. So this was born the commercial part of the project. And then all of those same people were asked the question about whether they would be interested in just as plain old seniors, no access to anybody younger type community, or whether they would like the kind of community where families of all ages, intergenerationally lived. And it was an overhoming response that they wanted to be involved in their community, not set apart from the community. So, over the course of the last three years since I acquired the property, we engaged with some of the major folks that do this on a national basis. THW Design is our architect group for the life care community. They're out of Atlanta, and they work all over the world doing this. They're very experienced. We hired the land use architects from the Saranby Project out there and towards the airport from here. They did the actual design, more of a newer urbanism style, which, for those not familiar, that means walkable, livable communities instead of spread apart suburban-type communities. And we hired Dixon Hughes Goodman to be the archi, the accounting firm to help us make sure we counted all the money right and put together a good business plan. So we did all those things, hired professionals from all over, and then I made sure that there was actually money on the backend. So BB&amp;T Capital Markets, HJ Sims, both groups are ready to float a bond option, well, as soon as we can get it ready, to go ahead and help me fund the entire construction of the life care community. They don't call it senior living anymore. They call it life care. So that's what we've got. And around that life care community, which you'll see is Unit C on your maps if you're looking, that's, that's one of the first phases that'll get built. The park will get built first. We also have a medical, we're going to call it not quite a plaza, but a medical office building and an opportunity for an urgent care. We've communicated with our local regional medical hospital several times about it. They have quite an interest, and that's all I can really say about that at this time. But we're going to have medical on site there. We'll have pharmaceutical on site. We will have retail and commercial shops, all within walking distance of the independent living right there around the main square. We've also been working with the YMCA of Metro Atlanta, who is a division of the national version, and they have agreed to allow me to sponsor a YMCA here for the entire region. That will be directly adjacent to the independent living portion of this that would be open to the public at large. So anybody who wants to in the whole city of the region can become a member for 99 bucks for you or your whole family, doesn't matter. And if you can't afford it, they will find you a scholarship to help you afford it. This is to encourage health and well-being throughout our community. We want everybody to be a part of it or have access to it. It will also help us run rehab, rehabilitation-type activities for seniors across the board. So that's just the commercial parts that we'll do in Phase One. There's a, in addition to that, we've asked for the opportunity to build single-family residential and commercial around it, and we've had the opportunity with the city's help and input specifically to get some higher density than what normally I would have chosen in order to help fund some of the sewer and water needs of the city, and I'll address that in a second. But the way that the plan balanced out the best to give us the most green space, and by the way, this project has over 50%, over 50% green space, not including the Gold Nugget Trail that comes through the middle of it. So we've really gone out of our way to make sure there's access to forest all around you and green space and so forth. So 225 single-family residences, they'll be in different size ranges, all the way from an 850-square-foot cottage that my mom wants facing, about eight more of those across a common green with alley access for the rears of those, up to, the base size will be from 1,250 square feet all the way up to 2,400 square feet, depending on what part of the neighborhood you're in, what size lot you have. All of those are outlined in your zoning books that you have access to, and the different size lots are all outlined and color-coded. It's a really pretty, I'm kind of annoyed that I didn't bring one to hold up in front of you now because I thought we would have 10 of them here. I apologize. Okay, you can actually see it. Okay. Great. And then further throughout all of these drawings, all of these homes that you have put on there, we have these little intermodal commercial districts at all the, at all the transitional points. So wherever two roads connect, we tried to make it like you'd find in any old city up, up north where they got money and can afford it. We tried to make it nice to where you'd actually have access to some multifamily right there at that transition, little retail spot down at the bottom. If you, there's a little local tiny store that wants to go in there or something. So we, we've tried to mix the community throughout, including the multifamily, so that nobody feels isolated or separated from the rest of their neighborhood. That's not really the traditional mode. And I'm getting a, a lot of positive feedback from people who want to live there, and developers and banks don't like it much. So I'm having to find, I'm having to find mixed-use specialists to help me fund it. And we've had three offers so far for developer partners to help us come fund the actual building of this stuff. So it's not a pipe dream. It's developed. I've got people ready and waiting on this zoning to help me get, get, get there. One of the other aspects of the community is we have the Gold Nugget Trail, as you guys have approved and mapped, that comes right through the middle of it. It comes down the current sewer easement. And we've designed it also to interact among the, amongst the houses in the community so that it actually has some transition points that go right through the living spaces. And, and part of the design on the lower level of the single-family residential units down there is actually overlooking the trail. We've decided to make it a feature instead of a problem. So when you have a townhouse, your back deck's going to be looking right over that, and it'll be a nice feature. And we're really looking forward to including it in our neighborhood and giving our residents access to the park on the south end, and hopefully someday through that other property that just got approved a few minutes ago, to get the trail all the way up to the intersection so that we can come downtown. I think there's a lot of folks that would like to be able to have the opportunity to walk downtown and maybe someday get a golf cart and go there. We'll see about how that works. I'm not asking for that today. At any rate, the last part that I wanted to discuss, let's see. This plan is not really different in scope from what we asked for originally. It's only different in detail. We have identified every single lot. We've numbered them all. We've shown you where they want to go. The only thing left to do is actually engineer those drawings, and that's another million dollars to this project. It's a really huge expense that is not something I can undertake without the zoning in place. We did the market study. I've told you about that. We're sure that it'll work. We just have to build it, and we, we know that they'll come. We already have a lot of interest. My mom's whole red hat group is ready to come on. So that's at least 30 sales. So we're ready to start moving on that. We have some parking questions, and I know that residents and neighbor, neighbors are going to want to talk about parking and, and roads. So let's just talk about it right now. We have designed these streets, including the alleys, with hammerheads and/or connectivity such that the garbage truck can go everywhere without interrupting and going down the main roads. We've got alleyways for every single house so that you don't have to face the garbage truck coming through your front door. We've designed it so that fire trucks and emergency personnel can get in and have access to everything without being restricted. And from a parking standpoint, the resident, the commercial piece up at the front has room for three per thousand just in the front, but we also have additional parking on both the north and the south sides that will have the employees and other folks that are working there, which we think will be 300 or more people actually working at this facility and/or the community and shops and the hospital pieces every day. We're going to have them park over under the transmission lines. I'm going to build a parking lot all the way down the hill so that they'll have access through a little golf cart shuttle that goes back and forth to their jobs. So the opportunity will be there for plenty of parking for employees outside of the main commercial zone, and then in the commercial zone. We don't think we're going to time-limit it right now, but we are going to have a little fellow on a golf cart driving around and encouraging people to move along. So we'll have all of that going on. We are able to build in more parking as needed, but that takes away from green space. So that'll be an ongoing discussion with, when we do building permits, as we get the engineering done, all that will go through the city. I'll make sure Tom and Bobby and the whole crew and I are on board about exactly what the parking will be. Right now, we have provided a spur to Charleston Place, and I know that was a concern of some of the neighbors. Councilman Montmahan wanted to make sure that we did make sure that that's provided, and we've drawn it into the drawing. It will be provided on the southern boundary through what looks like two empty lots into Charleston Place right now. I can't make them sell. I can't make them build a road, but we will have the availability of space. At the very least, I'll put a walking trail there and give folks access so they can walk right in through the neighborhood right there if they don't decide to build their own spur and come into the neighborhood if they choose to. So that will be accessible. I think I've told you a little bit about the housing. I didn't tell you about styles. So the architects that, that we use have designed us, and it is in the documents that you have from the zoning book. All of the pieces that really matter about setbacks and sidewalk size and all the other things that are included in there outline the kinds of community that we've been told from the very beginning is what the city of Villarica wants for its future, that other cities around our state and, and metro area are already doing to improve the lives and neighborhoods that they're in. So we've really made an effort to do that. The housing styles will be of a generational style that we already have here. So if you walk around downtown Villarica, you'll see what we're doing over there. Hopefully nice and new, which, you know, we have some here downtown, but it'll look like Villarica. It's not going to look like some modern space-age thing. It's not going to look like, you know, a Greek village. It's going to look like us. So that's what we've designed in from an architectural scale, and I think they would call some of it Victorian and some Georgian and some Greek and revival, those kinds of things. So all those styles will be met. When I talked to Councilwoman Firston about this project earlier on, she said it sounds too good to be true. And the, the point that I want to make to you about this is there's nothing else worth trying for. If it's not going to be the best we can do, let's not do it at all. And so that's my goal here. I'll do whatever else I can to help make it come out right, and I'm ready for your questions.
Was I just, to echo what you said, most of, I don't think I've had a single person that has said anything negative about it. There's a need for it.
Thank you.
And, and you've done a good job. This is a very ambitious project.
Thank you.
And I wish you all the best. One question I have for you, and you know what I'm going to ask you, because I, I see it on your plan, and I heard you allude to it, but that, it's a little bit different on your plan, is there's no doubt that there's going to be a traffic lot?
Yes.
At 61 right there.
Yes.
GDOT will be involved in that. So what that's going to do, that'll, that'll provide a way for your residents to turn left, to go toward I-20.
Yes, sir.
And what I had talked to you about when we first started this, and I don't know, Councilmember Montmahan had also, is to try to combine the two entrances so that the folks from Charleston Place can either get to your traffic lot, or they can, you know, vice versa. Because you're not going to get two traffic lots right there. You're not going to get two curb cuts. to get two curb cuts across 61.
Yes, sir.
So do you, when I'm looking at your plan, I see the one that you're proposing.
Yes, sir.
But I don't see the connectivity to Charleston Place.
Okay, so there's a...
I can point on this one if that'll help, but the connectivity to Charleston Place is right, right there. What I can't show you right now is some property that I don't own yet.
Okay.
And I have negotiated the opportunity to come across those in the future. Today, they'd still have to go through, go down the main drag and then straight up. So it would still be closer than going to the other traffic light and turning all the way around, but it's a...
It's until I can negotiate the other two pieces, which I can't really do in good faith till the zoning's done, we, the road's going to end up going straight out and connecting and coming over, so it'll be shorter.
I would just ask that staff keep that in mind, that when and if that happens, and that you keep that in mind also, that we, we try to keep the folks at Charleston Place in mind also.
Yes, sir.
Box them in so they don't have a way to turn around, because now they have to go all the way down to the Bay Springs, as you know.
Yes, sir, I intend to be a good neighbor, we're going to get that worked out. I, I didn't mention that we had a traffic study done, I know I told you all last time through, but Wilburn Engineering did our traffic study, they do them all around the metro area, they're really good at what they do. Our architects, including the engineer John Bass at Georgia and West in Carrollton, all met with DOT, with Wilburn Engineering to discuss the matter about the traffic light, also A-cell and D-cell lanes that would be adjacent to 61 in front of our parking. So we feel like it'll be real easy in and out. It does add traffic, it adds approximately 10,000 trips a day, which sounds like a lot, but it's really 500 residents getting to go, you know, a couple of times. They, the ins and outs and deliveries and all that stuff, that's how they add it up. But it's all going on to a major four-lane highway going that way. I've got two other potential exits that I have negotiated potentially with my neighbors, again pending my zoning, that will get us out onto a little bit for the backside out onto Van Wert and then South Van Wert, and then one over on Hickory Level if we're able to work that out with our, our neighbor over there, who is always fun to talk to.
What is the timeframe here? What are we looking at this first time when we can actually get started on this project?
If we had voted for this last, or tonight, like I thought we were, tomorrow, I've got the engineer lined up to start on the drawings, it'll take him about six months. Somewhere in there, we're hoping to apply for the land use, land disturbance permit, and it'll be depending on what the Bobby and the city and we all work out. But we'll start moving dirt as soon as we possibly can, we've got to go shoot some sonar into the ground, figure out where the rock is and, and get a plan for that. But six months, we'll start moving dirt, a year from now, we hope to be, well, a year from next month, we hope to be actually beginning to come out of the ground with some things.
Tom, when was this coming back before for rezoning?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
September 10th, we hope. Yes, sir. So we've got a year timeline to begin to, the park will start immediately, as soon as we can get the kind of, the zoning done. I already own the park, I already, there's already houses there, I can start refurbishing them right away. I may need some building permit upgrades, but we'll figure that out. But, so the park will get looking good pretty quick, and if I can start taking down some trees along Highway 61, we'll start doing that so you can see what's up, and we'll certainly make an effort to include you all, all along the way, informatively.
Questions from council?
It was, it was extensive, actually the biggest problem was just getting that 45-page document to download, which is not your problem, right? To try, it's still having problems, it seems like.
I generated 300 pages of data plus maps for this thing, and we're still, we, we got that much again to go just before we get started, so I appreciate your opportunity.
And just to be clear where this is for people going Charleston Place, think of you're going to Walmart, but keep going down 61 toward Carrollton, so Hickory Level, it's there on the right-hand side before you get to the V-plex, you know, where the baseball fields and all the fireworks are and all that sort of thing. You thought we were voting tonight, did we, did we miscommunicate with you? Was it our fault?
It was my fault, there was a, Tom always had envisioned, and I think correctly, that I'd be in front of you multiple times in order to explain it and give you the opportunity to ask questions. I was ready to go. So I thought that I had answered questions, but now I get the chance to do it again, and I'm grateful for that.
Okay, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want us to have topped the ball and not told you.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Other questions?
Jay, we look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Okay, now item number five, another street discussion, Danny?
Yeah, this thing seems to be dragging out, so I would like to find out what the plan is and what the schedule is for fixing the water on Leather Street so that they will actually have access to water.
I think I can probably give the update on that. We have completed the proposed agreement between the city and the 123 property owners who live on Leather Street. I just now have finished it, I need to communicate that to them so that they will have it and can determine whether or not it is satisfactory to them. I hope it will be. It's a little bit of a change from what your original plan was, but it is now in final form, and if they find it acceptable, I think we're ready to get it signed and move forward.
Okay, it still involves running a line from Dairy Queen down to Leather Street and putting three meters in next to 78?
Correct.
And then we tap on to?
It does.
Okay.
I'll just mention, my only concern with this is because it's drug out so long, months and months and months, and this seems to have happened on a couple other things too, is I think it's really important to us that the constituent, the citizen, somebody, somebody off staff or somewhere calls them to tell them this is where we are, because otherwise they're contacting one of us, you, and then we're calling one of y'all, who's then called someone else, and this has happened several times. I think it's really important for customer service that somehow these people get informed, and it's not three, four weeks later and nobody's told them where we are, or, or what to expect in timing.
Okay, what is the next step? We're waiting.
I have to send the agreements to Ms. Newton, Ms. DeValt, and the other two ladies, which I'll do tomorrow.
Okay.
I have a copy ready tonight, I don't, I don't see them here tonight, or I'd hand it to them tonight, but I'll get it to them tomorrow.
So they'll hear something tomorrow? They'll know? Okay, all right.
Echoing those thoughts, yeah, I received a call as late as yesterday, wanting to know what the status is, and I think sometimes that's where we drop the ball, is we just don't let the citizens know exactly what the, the status of projects that we've started are, so.
I, I don't always get those calls, but when one of you communicated that to me last week, I did call them and talk, talk to Ms. DeValt right then.
Okay, let me follow up on that. As soon as we complete that phase, how long is it going to take us to get a water line
The actual construction component is probably not going to be the issue, the issue's going to be making sure that we have easements down that whole stretch of road. So there is the possibility that this line will never be built, depending on the property owner. If we have a holdout in there that won't give us an easement or that fights us, this could go on for how long? How long's it take us to condemn an easement?
Which stretch of road are we talking about, Tom? We're talking about that?
There's not much right-of-way.
On Highway 78?
On 78 because of the widening, so there's not, there's not much to work with there without getting easements from the property owners.
And who's working on that?
Nobody yet, but if you, if, when David gets the go-ahead, we're going to start working on it.
So that's the easements running down from Dairy Queen on the side?
Correct, on 78.
In fact, we're going to, we're going to work at it from both ends, I think we're going to come up from the, down toward the, what used to be the right-of-way coming up and the Dairy Queen coming down, and we'll see which one is faster.
Okay.
Yeah, originally, we were going to have to get right-of-way on Leather Street, which is really a private driveway, but under the existing plan, we do not have to get those easements, so that's cutting out some work.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a reason why this didn't get done right the first time. It's complicated.
Well, I'm sure the lady's going to win, you know, she's going to be able to get some water.
Well, they're going to be part of the group that has to give us easements, I think, so we'll see. Our experience with getting easements since I've been here has not been good.
You will keep us informed, right?
Cover, Danny?
Yep.
Okay. Tab C, Pete?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item I have, the first item I have tonight, is a request to amend the agreement with Brandon Jones Engineering Associates for pump station and manhole structural rehabilitation. We had previously, you had previously approved an agreement with Brandon Jones Engineering to do this work in May 20, May 21st of this year, and this request would be to expand the scope of the project to include another additional 100 manholes for inspection and And to reiterate, the goal of, of the project is to eliminate leaks, reduce inflow and infiltration, conduct the structural repair of all structures and manholes, clean and remove roots, and in some cases, we may have to put a protective coating to prevent hydrogen sulfide corrosion. And staff recommendation is to approve the amendment to the agreement for an amount not to exceed $7,500.
Do y'all understand the scope of what he just said? So we started this with Brandon...
Put it in, you know, layman's terms.
How many months ago?
Well, we, we started about a year or so ago with...
When did they start identifying?
Yeah, the, the lift stations were like 15 months ago.
Right.
Okay, so 15 months ago, we started this process. In that 15 months, we have identified 100 manholes that we didn't have any clue that were there, and we're wondering why we have infiltration problems into our sewer. That's notable.
The positive side, though, is this, we're finding them. This wasn't being done, this is being done now, this work is getting done, the water pressure's going to increase in the downtown area. These things are happening, they're being addressed, but they had to be identified first, and unfortunately, it took water and sewer rates going up to do, to help fund that for it to happen. But as depressing as it is, because I'm going, I can't believe we have another 100, and I was looking on there, you learn so much in this job, like the sulfite stuff and what you got to do and coat things. But the positive side is, we have the diagnosis and now we're treating it. So it's going to take a while.
Didn't we find one of those manholes in the middle of a detention pond?
We did.
Nice.
Yeah, and over low, all near the V-Lo, so when it, when there's water and rain, yeah. We're in trouble, but I mean, we're getting out of trouble.
So Pete, would this additional $7,500 cover or help us identify and remediate everything that we currently know, at least?
This is just inspections.
This is just inspections, okay.
We can inspect another 100.
Okay.
We didn't know about.
So this will help us inspect what we know, then, that we may find additional ones as we continue on our journey here.
Well, that's correct, I mean, we, we have a pretty good GIS at this point, but it's incomplete, and of course, as we discover new things, we add it to the GIS system and, you know, hopefully we'll wind up with a complete, accurate system of where everything's located.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
The funding source is Jifa, so is that, is that where, where, that's what it says here. And I said, I knew we were fronting stuff with the idea that Jifa might be...
This one will just pay for it.
Okay, so that needs, that's on the cover sheet, all right, because I knew we didn't have that loan, and that was...
You're up.
I didn't know if we were just fronting it, we're just taking care of it, because we have the funds to do this as we go. Got it, thank you.
Catch.
I didn't catch it earlier, just a second.
Motion?
I may, I move approving the amendment to the agreement with Brandon Jones Engineering Associates LLC for the amount not to exceed $7,500.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Pete. Item number two.
Thank you. My second item is requesting the enclosure for the existing metal building at the Old West Plant as part of our relocation effort of our collection and distribution staff to the Old West Plant site. There's a current metal building there that used to house the old sludge press, and the building's in good shape, but one side of the building is open, it's like an open bay. So we want to enclose that and install a 14-foot door so we can secure Jimmy's equipment when his valves, his meters, that sort of thing, and get it under lock and key once he's moved over there, or to enable him to move over there. And as you'll see in my packet, I only have one bid, this was very difficult to get anybody to bid on this, and I actually had one company come out, look at it, do measurements, the guy took it back, and then he came back and just said, I talked with my boss, he didn't want to bid on the rest of the, the building, he just wanted to bid on the door. So other people that we've talked to, they're so busy nowadays, they just want to do, you know, projects where they're making more money and doing bigger structures, so that's what we've run into.
Well, at least we've got a local business, so the money will stay here, right, Carroll County business?
Yes, they're right down 61. So staff's recommendation would be to engage superior structures for the construction services to enclose the east side of the existing metal building at the West Plant and install a 14-foot roll-up door with an electric operator in an amount not to exceed $11,565.
Questions?
I think we all already talked about this, probably in one of the, I don't know, one of the meetings. Yeah.
And this is a budgeted item?
Yeah. Ready? I make a motion to engage superior structures for construction services to enclose the east side of the existing metal building at the Old West Plant, including the installation of a 14-foot roll-up door with an electric operator in an amount not to exceed $11,565.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, any discussions? Not all in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Tab D, Sarah?
First is the public hearing for the millage rate. Elisa's going to pull up the presentation we've shown at the other two public hearings for the millage rate. Basically shows what we advertise, the five-year history of our Property Digest and Millage, and then what the rollback was calculated to, which was 5.743, and what was advertised was to stay the same at 6.056.
We, we can't see that on, we don't have...
If you, you can switch your...
Questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay. No questions for staff, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this millage rate increase, please do so at this time, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Jody Mount, 214 Rockmart Road. And Councilmember Ferson, I want to thank you for pointing out the problems that we're having with our infrastructure, specifically the manholes, because it hasn't been done in the past. Unfortunately, this city has a history with a past, the administration before this one, of cutting corners, of saving money. That is, and that cost us money. If you have a house that has a leak, if you don't fix your roof, you're going to have a whole lot more damage. We are paying for that now, and we'll continue to do it. I implore you, do not roll back the taxes. This is not, if we leave them our, the way they are, that is not a tax increase, it is not a tax increase. We need those monies to continue... We need those monies to continue to fix all the problems the former administrations have left us. We have got to invest in our future. Please. None of y'all have the excuse of, "Well, the voters are gonna get mad, they won't vote for me." You don't have that excuse, okay? Do what's right for the future of our city. Do not roll this millage rate back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Mount, 214 Rockmart Road. The city's really grown. We got lots of, I know we have lots of new houses coming in, lots of new businesses. My understanding, 85% of the increase for this tax digest is from the new businesses that have come to town. So by leaving the tax millage rate the same, you don't increase my taxes, but what we're doing is we're growing the city without providing money to support the growth that we have. So I ask again that we do not roll back this millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive, Villarica. I would encourage you not to roll back the taxes. I understand that's a tough decision, and there's pros and cons on both sides. You're not gonna make everybody happy. That's impossible to make everybody happy. So you're gonna weigh out who's gonna be upset. We just discovered 100 manholes. I know that's gonna, that's paid out of Water Sewer Fund, an enterprise fund, but the enterprise fund has borrowed money from the general fund before. And it may, if we find a lot more discoveries like that, it may end up borrowing money temporarily from the general fund. We're also having all sorts of issues in the city with pipe breaks and things like that. We had to come up with a special deal to consolidate these road repairs, where pipes were broken, so that they would do 10 at a time instead of one at a time to save money. We've, this thing shows that we've reduced the millage rate in 2016 from what it was in 2015. We reduced the millage rate. And then in 2017, we reduced it again. And in 2018, we reduced it again. So we've had three consecutive years of reduced millage rates, and I would encourage you to hold this at the current rate. So we pick up $300,000 that I know we're gonna find surprises to spend on this year.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, can I get this down? I'm Pritsy Sullivan, 207 North Avenue. Now, you can call it what you want to, but if more money is coming out of my pocketbook going into a tax fund, it's a tax increase. The government has put this in place so that they don't have sneaky tax increases by not changing the millage rate. Now, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but my assessment went boing, which meant my taxes, even if they stayed the same, are going boing. So that's a tax increase to me. If this council would like to kind of catch up or find some extra money, how about vetoing the 200% increase in your salary you voted last meeting? That's a chunk of change, and it's an offense to give the employees who work day-to-day a 3% to 5% increase and give yourselves a 200% increase. You're not having that many more meetings, and if you are, you're not working efficiently. So yes, I find it offensive to even consider dipping into my purse any more than you already have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's gonna be a tough act to follow. Larry Coors, 115 Maple Valley Drive, Villarica. I'm gonna coin the phrase, verta. You tonight have now created the Villarica Transit Authority. Verta. Okay, back on millage, 47. We understand that you are going to, when you do the rollback, you're going to now have to take money off, out of the budget. So some of the items that are, that are proposed to come out of the budget are the increase for the code enforcement officer, $26,563. Small equipment, $10,000. The legal department, Mr. Mecklen, $35,000. $50,000 for Carol tomorrow, John. $30,000 for library books. $52,000 for Fourth of July. $85,000 for the IT department. Learning management software, so that we can go from everybody being a three on their performance evaluation to trying to understand why people should be three, fours, and fives. $27,000. The COLA is the hard part, it's $65,000. Because for the COLA, you're going to, at $65,000, and I believe the city council pay raise was about $52,000. So you're gonna pay for yourselves off the, out of the pocketbooks of the employees. There's a proposed budget reduction of $629,000 by one camp, and another proposal of reductions of $1.1 million. Remember, the COLA, Fourth of July, the library books, code enforcement, the legal department, learning management software, all are included in this. You need also the money for the new industrial park. How do you plan to pay for that? I propose that you keep the millage rate at the same rate as 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, we will revert back to the council for discussion.
All right, let's tackle the enterprise funds. This is where I just started from. Before, for as long as I can remember, we're all the way back, the first county in council, the enterprise funds have been upside down. We've always subsidized enterprise funds by pulling them out of the general fund to support them. And then a long time ago, our CFO decided that was the wrong thing to do, so she fixed that. And fixing that, and I got the chart right here. Elisa? No, I haven't gave it. You know what I sent to you? Okay, in fixing that, we decided on a three-year plan. And that three-year plan was to set up the rates so that these funds would pay for themselves, because these enterprise funds are supposed to stand on their own, and suppose have enough revenue coming in to pay for the expenses so that we don't have to subsidize them out of the general fund. So in 2000, we set up a three-year plan. 2018, 7% increase in the volume of water, 35% increase in sewer, 50% sanitation, and 250 in solid waste. And in 2018, 5% increase on the rate of water, a 30% increase on the sewer, a $2 sanitation increase. And there's a proposed increase for this year in the budget, which you see listed here for 2020, which is, we've asked the public to step up and absorb these increases, and I'm sure you've felt it, just like I felt when I saw my water bill go from 30-something up to 40-something. We've all been hit by these increases. Some would agree amongst us that passing along a tax increase to the people is like hitting them on the head. You know, you got them down with a huge rate increase, now you're gonna hit them with a tax increase. So I think personally, that I don't think we need to pass along tax increases while they're absorbing these rate increases. So I'm gonna throw a proposal on the floor to set the millage rate at 5.743, which is the rollback rate, which will keep people's taxes from going up.
Have a motion on the floor to reduce the millage rate with the rollback rate, which is 5.743%. Do I hear a motion? I mean, a second. Did I hear any?
Second.
Somebody say something?
Second.
I have a motion to the second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to ask some questions, you know, means taxes and means millage rates, but still, we talking about all this stuff that needs doing with the city, all these projects we got that we don't get, we don't have money to do. We got people that don't even have good running water. We don't have people that, some of the roads messed up. And if we roll this back, where we gonna get this money from? I don't know, we raising taxes or whatever, but we gotta get the money from somewhere to do this, to get these projects done.
I have a point I can-
Can you let me explain?
What, what are finished?
Okay.
So if we, I mean, we got people over there that we talking about, that these by the grace of God, they ain't get burned up in no houses. We got, we got a lot of stuff we got to, and I know, I mean, I'm a taxpayer just like everybody else. So I pay taxes too, but we need to do something to get some of, some of this work done that we are talking about, that needs done in the city. So if we keep it where it is, won't that put us some more money in that we can get some of these projects done? That's what I'm looking at. I mean, I think, like you say, everybody pay taxes, I pay taxes like everybody else. So it's not that I'm saying somebody else is supposed to do something that I'm not doing. That's the way I look at it.
Okay. Even with the rollback, the revenue from the property taxes is still lower than it was last year. It's, we're still getting more revenue, even with the rollback, with a couple of thousand more than it was from last year. So we still have extra money over last year.
If we've done rollbacks, I think somebody mentioned it for the last three years, so why we can't leave it where it is, so we can get some of this done and see where we end up. And then maybe we, the next year, we can do the rollback.
Well, I just wanna say, I've talked to all the council, I've talked to a lot of the public out there, and good points on both sides. Nobody, I pay taxes too. I don't want my taxes to go up any more than anybody else. And we live in a, we live in a county in a world where school board just announced that they're going up on rates. Water department just announced they're going up on rates. We are a part of that ocean. We all swim in that water. So I think the council has, I fully see both sides of the argument, I truly do. And I don't know how the council's gonna vote, but I would just say, since I won't be here next year for that discussion, even if you decide, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but even if you decide to roll the rate back, you need to keep in mind that when growth turns down, when the growth market stops, and it will stop, it's just a matter of when, if you continue to roll the millage rate back, you're not gonna be able to do the projects that we're talking about doing.
Yes, I would say.
So this year was a good year, the tax digest was up, and if you vote to roll the millage rate back, understand that if that millage, if that tax digest does not come in like it's supposed to in 2020, you're gonna be looking for sources to find the money for these projects. So I just wanna offer that.
Mayor, can I say the rollback will be, if you were to roll it back, that would be a decrease of 200,000 in the revenue?
How much?
200,000.
$200,000 decrease. I believe you did a report, I think Councilmember McDougall asked how many residents were actually affected by this tax increase, and that number was?
I don't know a number. I sent the percentages with-
Percentage?
I don't have it in my-
I believe, I believe residential was about 15%. Some of it was commercial, industrial, that sort of thing. This is something we've sat around and debated with one another, and don't take it lightly. The enterprise fund is separate. The water and sewer is separate. It is now the healthiest it's ever been. We're not there. Well, yes, we are there in a lot of ways. I mean, we've gone from being in the red to being in the black and bringing in income. Not enough to fix everything for the future, it's gonna involve loans. It's healthy. Because of doing that, the general fund is now healthier than it's ever been, because we aren't robbing the general fund to cover the water and sewer. It is true that if you keep rolling back, there will be a consequence because of the growth. You've got to accept some of that money to take care of that additional growth that you have. At the same time, we do have sploshed, lost licensing, a lot, we have received a lot more tax dollars, even at the state level, because all those other amounts, the revenue has been coming in higher, which helps take the pressure off the property owners. And lastly, I'll just say that there has been discussion, I can't say how things would go next year, but if we ended up, I don't know, compromising to a degree to say, because we have continued to raise water and sewer rates significantly on our people, and we don't plan on that happening next year, and even this year is not decided, that then at least it would be easier to not do the rollback next year, because there is that feeling that we have just hammered, all of us in some ways, to fix the water and sewer. This is, this is heavy. I don't want people to think, when they come up and give comments about how they feel about this, that any of this is done flippantly. I mean, we've debated with one another and tried to come to some sort of consensus, and I don't know where that's gonna end up. But if that explanation helps at all, on the feeling of giving a rollback sometimes when people have had something else go up over and over again, and that it, when that comes to an end, it makes it a lot easier to accept, accept that additional income coming in and not do the rollback.
Let me say one other thing, that since we had a three-year program in place, and this is the third year, I anticipate next year, we probably won't roll it back. But since we have really hit the people who are like Councilmember McPherson was pointing out, I think it's the right thing to do this year, and then consider next year, hold it steady.
Any other discussion? I have a motion on the floor to roll the millage rate back to 5.743%. And a second. All in favor? All opposed? The vote is 3-1. Okay. Item number three is our financial update.
If you've been there long enough, you don't have to be told.
Long frame.
All right, this is our financial update for July of 2019. Our fiscal year will be ending at the end of September, so this is 10 months through our fiscal year. This is the cash comparison of July of last year to July of this year. Our total cash and CD have gone from $10 million to $15 million. General fund has grown from $4.5 million to $7.3 million. Water sewer fund, yes, we are seeing the effects, the improvements there with the rate increases, $1.5 million to $2.6 million. Sanitation, we're still showing a loss there. In this last audit, they didn't write off that negative balance, but I anticipate that we'll do that this year, and hopefully, we'll be done with that. And then last, and just so everyone knows, that is not a negative in the bank. We have a pooled cash bank account where a lot of our operating expenses come in and out. Deposits go in, and expenses, checks go out. So the system keeps track of what those balances are for us. But those last three accounts are our sploshed accounts, those are actually separate bank accounts. We do have an '08 splosh still. We're not currently receiving any funds for that, we're still spending that on our capital projects. And then we have two current splosh, which is the 2015 Carroll and the 2016 Douglas. Next, this is our growth chart. Mostly seeing growth in residential. Our building permits last July, we're at 127 new building permits for residential, whereas this July, there are almost 100 permits more. And then water taps and sewer taps are in line with that as well. This is our water and sewer income statement. So this is after two rate increases, and you can see how much the revenue has grown if you look at that total revenue line, from $5.7 million to $7.1 million. And then our total expenses, they have grown, but not as much. So we're showing a half a million dollars net income this year. However, that looks great, but in 2020, that was when our bond payment was increasing by about that much, so we won't- So we won't be seeing that big of a number for the 2020 budget. Sanitation, solid waste, and we're seeing net income again. And this is after two rate increases as well. We're talking smaller numbers here, so it's not as big of an increase, but we are over a million dollars in our revenue there. Total expenditures is following suit. But compared to last year, where we had a loss of $92,000, we're doing a lot better. There's some other highlights. The first two are our local option sales tax numbers. We have money coming in from Carroll and Douglas County. You can see an increase in both counties this year. Our splopped, we have reached the point in the year where we have received all we're gonna get for the year, because the county, they, they pay off their bond first for the sploß before they give us any more money. So we have received all we're gonna get this fiscal year, and then in December, they, they catch up for the months that they didn't pay us. So, but still, compared to last year, where we were at the same point, we've received more this year than last year. Total number of employees, we've grown 10 employees since last year. That excludes seasonal employees, but we have 165. And this is our self-funded insurance. As of today, we have saved $740,000. This is the program that we went on in October 2017, where instead of paying a big insurance carrier, we are putting the money in a bank account, and only, we have a third-party administrator that only pays actual claims, so doctors' bills and prescriptions that come through. So the orange box tells you how much we have contributed to the plan. That's the city contributing for the employees, and also the employees contributing part of that, $1.3 million. And the expenses in the blue box, again, those are actual expenses, doctors' bills and prescriptions, as well as administrative fees, fees for wellness and things. So far, in just this fiscal year, we've saved $180,000. So overall, the plan has saved us $740,000.
So for those that are new in the audience and may not know what we're talking about here, one of the first things that Tom did when he come here, we started looking at our healthcare program. And we were, I believe with United Healthcare at the time?
Yes.
And we were looking at probably a 12% to 15% increase in our premiums. And Tom, and Stephanie, and Sarah, and staff worked with the company, and they, basically the company said, "We can save you money," which we hear that all the time, right? But the company came to us and said, "You know, you can become self-insured now the laws changed." Tom was very familiar with it, coming from Fairburn. And so he came to us and sold us on it. And I think with reservation, because it was something new that we were all kinda unsure of, and it took an enormous amount of staff time. Stephanie spent a lot of time on this and still continues to spend it. Basically, what we did was, rather than paying the money to United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield or another carrier, we control those costs now. That money that would have normally gone to United Healthcare in the form of that $740,000 in profit, we keep now in a bank account. We are self-funded completely, so that money is savings that is in the bank. In addition to that number, we've also implemented the second phase of that healthcare system, which is, I think we're using Fitbits now. I don't know how that's going. Is it, is it paying dividends so far?
Not sure.
Not much? Okay.
I'm not sure.
But we're trying to get our, you know, our workforce, you know, we're trying to get them healthy, because that saves the taxpayers money, and, and obviously, I want the, the employees to live long and prosperous lives. And so kudos to staff and Tom, who came to us and said, "Hey, guys, let's try something." And we're all, "I don't know about all this. I've never heard of anything like it in my life." So that's one of the, certainly one of the bright and shining stars that, that we've done in the last three years. So thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager's report.
Mayor and council, it's been several months since we did one of these, so I'm gonna hit some of the high notes and skip over some of the older stuff. A couple of recent developments concern projects related to GDOT. One is, we have received our temporary construction easements for the 61 Punkin Town intersection, water relocation, and roundabout. And now we have a new point of contention about the removal of some trees that David is working on, so we'll keep you abreast of that. We are attempting to bore underneath 78 and the railroad between Donritz Ford and the olive tree, and not surprisingly, hit rock. So we went to Plan B and hit rock. So are we on Plan C starting tomorrow? So we're not off to a roaring start there.
What is Plan C? Is there any other way?
We're moving, you know, left and right in that same area.
We're not gonna ask the railroad to move, though.
So I think we, we've operated on both sides of, of stone and hit rock, so. The next thing is, if you've taken 20 into town, you've noticed that the post-road bridge jacking project has not completed. It was scheduled to, to take place from June 15th to the end of July, but they had a problem, I understand, with an AT&amp;T cable. So they are now trying to finish by the end of this month. And to my surprise, I understood that this, that all six of the bridges would be done in 19 and 20. So I was thinking that Liberty Road would be done next year, but now I'm understanding that it's been extended to not only summer of 20, but summer of 21s, and I still don't know which one we're getting. So Liberty Road Bridge is gonna go through the same treatment to be raised either next summer or the summer after. I don't believe that at the time that I did one of these most recently, that we had gotten the message that the funding for the North Bypass had been moved up, but it is now scheduled for 2022. So the engineers are now back on schedule to complete two projects. One is to redo the traffic study, which was done in 2012 and has to be redone. And then to complete the environmental study, which I've been told, and on different occasions, takes either 18 months or two years, and has about a, I understand, a one-year permit shelf life. So it has to be done as the last thing before you start doing construction. So that's underway. We are also working with Kekking Wood on the utility relocation. So at each, at each end of the proposed bypass, we're gonna have to pay to move everything. So electric, water, sewer, everything that's in the way of the proposed termination points of the road, we're gonna have to move. Kekking Wood is now back in the process of trying to get GDOT to fund that, instead of us funding that. So I'll, I'll let you know when we hear something there. We have talked to you several times about switching out hardware on our network. We had some older 100-meg network switches. We switched them to some newer 1-gig units, which is a 10-time improvement. We've gotten new phones, and not surprisingly, the network performance has improved. We had taken some of our cameras, our security cameras, offline, off the network, because we couldn't, the bandwidth just wouldn't support them. But they've all been reconnected and, and the network is functioning okay. If you have not been out to Pine Mountain recently, Nick and the guys have cleaned out the koi pond. I don't know if we talked about that much, but they took all the fish out, and they weren't all koi either, 'cause people have been throwing all kind of stuff in there. So there were catfish in there and bream and all kind of stuff. So we've taken, we've taken everything out, we've emptied the pond and tried to clean it, because it had, however, I don't know, how old is the koi pond? 10 years old or something? Maybe it had 10 years' worth of fish stuff in it. And so we cleaned all that out, and now you can actually see the fish, right? Clean water, right? It's not black like it was. So go out there and see it, because I'm, the, the guys really worked hard on that. And, and I don't mean for a minute, I mean like for...
How many weeks?
Month.
Or more than a month even?
Yeah. Like every day, a whole crew for weeks and weeks to clean that thing out. Fitbit participation, the last time I asked Stephanie, we had 112 employees who had, who had participated and gotten a Fitbit. Another thing that we've been doing that has paid dividends is we have been evaluating, reviewing, evaluate's probably an overstatement, reviewing each new employee after four months of employment, in order to prevent somebody from sliding past the six-month probation by accident. And one of the benefits of that is that we, we meet with the department head, and it's given us a reason to talk about basically all their personnel issues. So we're getting sort of a double benefit out of that that has, has been helpful. We still have a couple of police officer vacancies, but we have five folks in the academy, four currently, and one that starts, you know, like in a week. So there, there's still a lot of transition in that department among the, the officer We talked a little bit about butterballs. We've gotten the site plan back, so we need to sit and talk about that, and what we're gonna do there. I would like to make a decision in the, in the context of the budget process, so that whatever we decide to do, we've got it budgeted to execute. Let's see. Hickstown Brewing, we talked about tonight with the, the country music thing. So we, we got an engineering design, and we submitted it to GDOT and the Norfolk Southern, and it got kicked back, and we had it revised, and we sent it in again. So we're still waiting on permits from both of them, and as, as fate would have it, the GDOT guy is no longer there. So now I'm dealing with a new guy, trying to get him caught up. So, so we're still going through that. Pete continues to work on the water treatment plant improvement, so we don't talk about that. It's been going on for how long, Pete? Has it been that long? So at some point, that thing's going to bid, right? And it's gonna be $4 to $5 million to upgrade that plant. But as Pete will tell you, it is operating with duct tape and baling wire and, I mean, you hear what happened. We just had a malfunction and flooded a room and ruined some equipment and had to replace it. And I mean, the, the place is barely holding on. In addition to that, we haven't had any rain, so we're not getting any flow from the upper reservoir to the lower reservoir. So if you go out to Lake Paradise to Moody Park, and you look, there's a little pond that sits at the bottom of the upper lake that feeds into the lower lake, and it's dry, which means we're not getting any water from that upper one. And we're having trouble at Cowan. So we're only making about a million gallons a day now, instead of a million three. So we're buying a lot more water from Carroll than we were, and that's gonna continue until we get some rain. We're trying to do a waterline extension on Edge Road for Liberty Pool. That easement acquisition did not go well. David's been working with us. We decided that the better solution, instead of fighting the property owners, was to reroute, and then we, of course, hit rock. So we rerouted, so we're, we're still going through, like, the third design revision of that, trying to find a route that we can actually use. We told you that we would be, we would be seeing the pavement patching vendor at work soon. And I don't know, Bobby, how long they been out there? Two, a couple, two weeks? So if, if you see that happening, all those utility cuts that Jimmy has made, you know, where we're basically averaging a, a cut a day, we, we've got a contractor now that's going back and patching them. So you should be seeing some progress there. Every metal plate that we owned, I think, was being used, covering up holes on, you know, the, the high traffic areas. Uh, let's see. We talked about Brennan and what he's discovered so far. One of the things that we learned is, is that there's an old, and Pete, you'll have to help me with the name of this thing, the old, old technique where they had water lines that went into the manhole to flush them? I don't know what that's called, but anyway, he actually found one that's still in existence, which is, according to him, like a no-no, like, they shouldn't still be out there. So we've learned some interesting things. One of the things we learned that's backwards from what we thought, was we thought that we were gonna find that the brick, the older brick manholes were our biggest problem, and they've not been. So whoever built those things really knew this stuff, 'cause they are how old?
1920s.
Wow. And are still, not just functioning, but like...
They're not leaking.
Performing really well. 90-year-old brickwork. So I don't know who that guy was, but kudos to him. Uh, let's see. The V-Plex sign has been repaired. If you'd noticed, it had wind damage, but staff is going to, at some point, not now, but at some point, come back and recommend that we replace that sign and relocate it and change the, the kind of sign. So it's old technology in its own, the south side of that entrance pair. Say again?
Yeah, it's not on our property.
I don't even wanna know that. Okay, I didn't know that. So we'd like to move it on the other side of the entrance that comes off the red light and, and do a better, a better sign. So we'll be bringing that back to you. Ron has recently submitted a grant for a rural zone, which is a, a combination of enhancement for, for downtown projects and towns that, that meet a certain characteristic. We qualified for that application by 100 people. So this is the last year that we get to apply for this thing. So I think the limit was, whatever population measurement they use, the limit was 15,000. We had 14,900. So keep your fingers crossed, 'cause it's either now or never. If we don't get it this time, we're not, we're not getting it. We continue to work on the second industrial part. We're gonna be talking about that in a Development Authority meeting on September the 5th, so we'll bring you some more information about that. We had an August leadership luncheon meeting at the venue. Sarah Ray from Douglas County Chamber of Commerce came, had good attendance. That was a, a good meeting. Those have been really good. If you don't get to come to those, the good networking, the food's good, the presentations are good, they're interesting. We, we learn something every time we do one of those. We also had applied for a Brownfield grant with Douglas County and a conservation group, jointly, the three of us, and we didn't get it. So we had a debrief with them about why we failed, and I think we're gonna go back and take another run at that. That was something that Lanice did back when she was here, working with, like, Ron Roberts, I think, with Douglas County, if that's right, they're, one of their zoning guys. And then we've had a bunch of events since, since we talked. Concerts, the GMA Conference, fireworks show, and of course, we got Gold Rush, Alabama Blues, Blues Brothers, and Ghost Train, all right around the corner. So it's time for executive session.
Thank you, Tom. I enjoy those city manager reports. I wish we had them. I know you don't have time, probably do those for every meeting, but I really get a lot out of those. And you touched on two things that I mentioned up front, so I appreciate that. David, lead us into executive session.
We need to entertain a motion to go in executive session for first purpose of meeting to discuss or vote to enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease real property, and a second reason pursuant to the attorney-client privilege to discuss potential or pending litigation settlement or claims.
I'll make a motion, what he said.
Have a motion to go in executive session, second. Have a motion, second. All in favor? We are in executive session. Y'all stick around. Thank you for coming.